Oh. I forgot about that. See, now we're good. Okay. Welcome to the February 26 Planning Commission meeting. Emily, do you want to do your roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Lee?
Here.
Commissioner Bennett. Commissioner Nemiroff?
Here.
Commissioner Vella Buly?
Here.
Commissioner Strauss?
Here.
Commissioner Thorson?
Present.
And Commissioner Miranda?
Here.
Chair Olson?
Here. Thank you. So next, we have approval of the meeting agenda. Were there any edits to this? Comments?
I'll move approval of the agenda as submitted.
Second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next is approval of the meeting minutes from the February 12 Planning Commission meeting. Were there any edits to those? Comments?
I'll move approval of the minutes as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. So next, we have community comment, and this allows an opportunity for anyone from the community to come up and speak. You get three minutes, and it's an item that should not be on the agenda tonight, and then it's also something that we won't address during tonight's meeting but could be pushed on to a next meeting. But I know that, Russ, you're here, and you'd like to speak.
Please.
Thank you.
I'm Russ Rubin, 6601 Biscayne Boulevard. I'm here as the Chair of the Arts and Culture Commission. I'm joined by Heather Isaac, who's also a Commissioner with the Arts and Culture Commission. And we just thought it would be good for us this year to come out and speak to most of the Commissions and share what we're working on, and ask for your active participation, involvement, and support of what we're trying to do this year, specifically in the next three years for the whole area of public art. And public art traditionally, for the city of Edina, has been largely restricted to the Centennial Lakes area. It's been fairly traditional in terms of sculpture, and it really appeals largely to what we would call a traditional audience. And what we're trying to do is to increase that reach, increase the frequency, and really reach a new audience that might not be participating today in what we're doing in terms of public art. So we are going to be very experimental this year and the next few years. We're going to be trying out a few different things that are less traditional and reaches out to groups of people who might not be participating yet. And as you are doing your deliberations on developments and new areas, we'd ask you to keep that in mind. We're going to be working with the rubric that's going to be developed by HRRC in terms of diversity and inclusion, and it's important to us that all of the developments that you're working on and the plans that you're putting together, keep that in mind so that we -- so the Pentagon Village, which is a great example of doing some good things with public art, that we continue to reach out and try other things. And we're going to be asking for everybody's involvement for input, because we just don't even know what we're going to do yet. We just know that we have to try to do some things differently. So as you discuss things, please keep that in mind, because we're going to be doing things a little bit differently and asking for everybody's involvement. Let me check my notes. I think that is really it. So please keep us in mind, we're going to be talking to Parks and Rec because we think there's a lot of opportunity there to build on the work they're doing, to take advantage of their venues, take advantage of their facilities, and reach out to the neighborhoods and not just have it all kept in one or two specific neighborhoods like it is today. That's really all we wanted to cover today.
Well, thank you. Really appreciate it. And just, I know I'm not supposed to really comment too much or reply, but just to emphasize that also our goal is to, at work sessions, meet with each of the Commissions throughout the year to kind of see how the comp plan is going and how everyone's chapters and all that. So -- but I really appreciate you, you know, reminding us again to kind of look at the whole picture.
Absolutely. Thanks for listening and thanks for your support.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the community who had any comments? Should I put pressure on the students that are here? Would you get extra, extra credit if you came and made a comment? Just kidding. All right, moving on. Good thing I'm not a stand-up. We have one public hearing tonight, and is that being continued? Is that correct?
Yes, it is. So you would have to make a motion to continue it to the March 11th.
I move to continue the public hearing for item B-20-5 for variance at 4209 Crocker Avenue to the March 11th meeting of the Planning Commission.
Great. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And then our next item is reports and recommendations, and it's a sketch plan review. Sorry, I should continue that for 4701 West 77th Street.
Yes, Chair members of the Planning Commission, this is a sketch plan proposal for 4701 West 77th Street. The subject property is located in the southeast corner of the intersection of 77th and Computer Avenue, as highlighted. It's, as you can see, it's a one-story building with surface parking to the east. It consists of a one-story office building. It's a multi-tenant office building. Here's a survey of the existing property. The applicant is proposing to tear down that existing 14,000-square-foot office building and build a six-story, 177-unit apartment building with 237 parking stalls. 219 of those would be enclosed, and 18 would be surface stalls. It will comply with the city's affordable housing policy by including all of the units onsite in the building. Due to a high water table, the first two levels of the building will be enclosed parking. So there are some challenges with the site in terms of the water table. The site is 2.37 acres, and it is owned PID Planned Industrial District, but it is guided in the comprehensive plan for office residential for up to 75 units per acre, which that is what they're proposing to comply with, is the 75 units per acre. The project will include micro units, studio, one- and two-bedroom units. Amenities would include a club lounge, workspace, fitness area, third-level outdoor courtyard. Indoor bike parking in the parking garage is planned so that they can take -- residents can take advantage of the regional trail and also the former Fred Richards Golf Course that'll now be a park that's very close by. There will be boulevard-style sidewalks along 77th and Computer Avenue. So this is the second level, the first level parking, and then on the first level, there were some units along the north side. They would be grade-level units. And then on the second level, you have parking in an enclosed portion of the building with units on the north side. Then on the third level, fourth and fifth and sixth-level apartments. Again, they would be micro, studio, one- and two-bedroom. Here are some bird's-eye view of the proposal. This would be at the corner of 77th and Computer Avenue. There's going to be an open court area at the corner of the building. There'll be a curb cut and access along Computer, and then also along the north side on 77th to access, in both cases, the enclosed parking garage. And there'll be a portico chair on that west side with the surface parking along the south portion of it. Again, another view of what that building will look like from that corner. And here's some examples of those interior amenities that they're proposing, and then examples of what a micro unit might be, and also some exterior inspiration, what they're looking at in terms of exterior finishes. And then the exterior amenities that may also be involved in the development of the site. They would have a deck amenity on that top above the second floor of the parking garage area where there aren't apartments above. So in terms of what is required in order to accomplish this proposal, it would require rezoning from PID Planned Industrial District to PUD. PUD will give it flexibility to vary from the required setbacks. They are going to be six stories or 64 feet in height, which is well below the 12 stories and 148 feet overall height maximum. However, the ordinance would require that you match the height with the setback. They are proposing the 50-foot setback as recommended in the Design Experience Guidelines along 77th, and then having some narrower setbacks on the interior portions of the lot. They would be at 75 units an acre, which is the density maximum and would comply. The floor area ratio would not comply. They're looking at a 1.2% as opposed to 0.5, and a lot of that really is that parking garage area, the two levels of parking, because they can't do below-grade parking. And then the parking requirement, what would be typically required for that number of units would be 354 spaces. That's two spaces per unit, given the fact that you have micro units, studio and one-bedroom apartments. It's probably not necessary to have two parking spaces per unit, so they are looking at a reduction in that. So it would be 1.34 stalls per unit. So you did receive an email form from Mick Johnson with Architectural Field Office, a review of the project based on the Design Experience Guidelines, and I'll just quickly, briefly go through some of the comments that he had in terms of opportunities that could be pursued. He had number one in this area outlined, proposing an exposed ramp leading from West 77th Street to the second floor. The parking structure is being proposed, and he was, in effect, wondering if the best pedestrian character of the public realm, if this was to become a prominent pedestrian only or shared corridor or woo-nurf in this area. Number two, he points out that there are two access points to the parking ramp from two different streets, which is rather confusing and redundant, is wondering if it could all be consolidated down over to the southwest end of the site. And then for number three, the portico chair is not really facing the street, and can the portico chair drop off front door and lobby be reoriented and simplified with a curb cut and canopy facing Computer Avenue instead of just the interior and facing the parking? It is suggested in number four that parking for visitor and outdoor parking be moved inside the structure. And then number five, that would -- moving visitor and guest parking inside the parking structure, could it be possible to have a two-story townhouse area added along that west side of the parking ramp? And then number six, could the parking structure move west, the entire parking structure move west? And on that part of this parking structure, would it be possible to have some two-story townhomes line the parking structure along the east side? Number seven, there were some comments, is it possible to replace the proposed ramp access with a woo-nurf or other pedestrian-oriented environment on the east side of the site? So along here, or at least leave it open for that. And then number eight was, it was pointed out that the sidewalks are very close to the streets, and that it's intended with the Design Experience Guidelines that they be pulled away from the curb and that you have opportunities for plantings and have more of a boulevard-street effect. Staff would add that with any submission, a traffic and parking study would be required. And with that, I believe we have some representatives who would like to introduce their project, and I stand for questions if you have any of me.
All right. Thank you, Chris. Are there questions? Go ahead, Jerry.
Chris, this particular parcel, did we look at -- well, I'm sure, did we look -- we did look at a project here maybe a couple of years ago. Does anybody -- I remember it as a mini-storage.
Yeah.
And then maybe some worker space or some sort of like shared space?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And that, I think, involved, or they were retaining, they were just remodeling the facility, kind of?
I'm trying to remember, but I think yes.
Okay.
In both, yeah. Because they had some additions to it, and they were going to pretty much maintain the building.
Okay. So now, this is, I mean, the building is, the existing structures are to be raised, and
Correct.
We're completely
Yes.
scraping the site. Okay. Thank you.
I believe when we looked at the development across the street facing the Fred Richards, that being residential, there's some conflict with state law regarding proximity of residential properties to industrial properties that became somewhat of a concern about noise. Okay.
Possibly.
Maybe I'm misremembering things, which is entirely possible.
Well
No, it was this one.
With Seagate, is that what you're
Yes.
referring to? And again, this is at sketch plan, and yes, that was raised in another case.
Okay. So, thank you.
Questions for Chris? Chris, did they get an opportunity to receive mixed?
Yes. They were sent.
All right, great. Okay. Well, does the applicant want to come up and speak and present?
Sure. You can just sit there. Yep. If you're going to stand here. Okay. So I was going to stand over here. You can use someone.
Well, hi, everybody. I'm Tom Lund. I'm back. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to present to you this evening. I'm with Lund Real Estate Partners. I'm based here in Edina and also live here in Edina. I've been here since 1971. Most recently, I was here before you with Guitar Center, and I have an image to share. I just have to do it. I can't help myself. There you go. I don't know if you can see that, but there you go. It's gone. Guitar Center's gone. So I wanted to, I just wanted to share that with you. I'm pretty excited about that, so construction starts soon. So some of you may know this building. It was the American Heart Association Building. And apparently, what I've been told, that American Heart Association moved in to the building in 1963, and was there until a little over a year ago, and they moved out. Jerry Roundhorse built the building, and the, this is another, I went over there this morning, took a picture of this, because when I was at Opus, we did this, too. These old plaques are on every building that they've ever built. They're bronze now, packed, but they're, it's 1963. And so I'm thinking this was probably one of the very early buildings that he built. The 4820 building across the street has a plaque that says 1962, so it's, it was in the early beginnings of the company, because I know, I think it started in 1956, so. I'm joined also here by Pete Keely with Collage Architects, and Pete's going to speak to you in just a little bit. We're going to add some other team members, Westwood, who did Pentagon Village across the way, so they know the floodplain issues here, and Terry Minaric, who's been working in Fred Richards Golf Course, or Fred Richards Park, is joining us, and he also is on Guitar Center. So, and I've worked with him for years, and he's a terrific guy. So personally, I've had some development experience in this area, which goes way back in time. I, in 1997, I joined Opus, and my very first project was this building across the street, owned by Mark Roundhorse, I think actually owned the ground. And it was where the, I think it was the old clubhouse or something was there a long time ago. But anyway, so we ended up doing a three-story office building, bar engineering, ended up moving in there, taking much of the building. And one last, my last photo. Here you go. My kids. So this, I found this picture from 1998, actually, of my kids climbing on some of the equipment when we were digging holes over there. So, and I just remember the project managers, project superintendents being very grumpy about the fact that the soil there is really, really bad, so. So let's see here. So following the Guitar Center approval, we started to look for other sites. We ended up identifying this site as a underutilized site, and in August, we put it under contract. And before we did any sort of design work with Pete, we did geotechnical testing to just see what was there and if we could actually build on the site. It's pretty bad soil, but you can build on it. It's low, so we have to fill, and, which is, I guess, good for us. We don't intend to put any underground parking at the site. That would be really cost prohibitive, and then you've got lots of issues. The water table is very high there, and so we got our arms around that, got our arms around the environmental, and felt confident at that point that we could kick things off with Pete. And so we started to do some drawing. Next step was to meet with Kerry and get staff's thoughts on the project, and Kerry was, you know, pretty excited about it. He mentioned the mini-storage, and he was like, this would be way better than mini-storage, and so we were happy to hear that. And we felt it was a good location for multifamily, but something maybe a little bit different than what's been built pretty much everywhere. It just, it was feeling to me that something was missing in Edina, I guess. The, most of all, the new projects are very similar, except I would say Nolan Main or Guitar Center will be different than the stuff that's been built. I can call it kind of down-the-middle-of-the-fareway product. It's kind of built everywhere. Every two-bedroom is about the same size, and a one-bedroom is the same size, and studios are the same size, everything's about the same size, and they're kind of laid out the same. So, and I was seeing some things that were being done in some other markets with smaller product, smaller units, Minneapolis, and then, of course, Seattle and Portland and San Francisco and all over. But in this case, just to, in my mind, was to broaden the spectrum of opportunity for people that maybe couldn't afford to be over by Southdale. It's just, it's getting pretty expensive over there, so. So it seemed like a prime site. It's really close, it's obviously in a great location, on Highway 100 and 494, and lots of employment around there, and, you know, Hillcrest and Solomon are doing an amazing job across the street. So it's just, it just, it just kind of, to me intuitively, felt like the right spot. So I guess, I guess I'd go on to say, you know, speaking to the holes in the market and where I thought there were maybe some opportunity and some needs, and, you know, for people who wanted to stay in Edina, maybe didn't need as much space, young professionals, perhaps somebody who wanted to live, you know, close to, you know, their employment and such, and, you know, close to all the new restaurants and such, that'll be happening around Pentagon Village. So with that, Pete and I just went to work, mostly Pete, I would say, and respecting the zoning, the Southdale Plan, the 2040 Plan, the height restriction of 12 stories, the 75 units per acre, the soil issues, and the water table issues. And we just, this is the plan that we've come up with that I think is a very solid plan, and I think would be very successful in this location. We're meeting with the city engineer, bar engineering, the Water Street District, Westwood Engineering on March 10th. So, you know, just around the corner here to kind of kick off the whole discussion about floodplain and how do we manage the, you know, the water and implications related to climate change and the potential flooding that seems to be occurring more often these Units are designed to be smaller on average with the goal of creating more affordable, more affordable project in terms of monthly rents. We're not trying to compete with the product around Southdale. Creating affordability, I will say, is a huge problem, but doing Guitar Center was a real problem and very hard. So we figured that, you know, we're going to give this a shot. I think we've got a good shot at it. But land costs, poor soil, floodplain, infrastructure costs, rising construction costs, material shortages, coronavirus, all those things are just going to make it complicated and fun, but we're going to, we're going to work hard at it. I'd say that the, also that the expense of these projects comes with the fact that you're doing smaller units, but the expense is really in the, you know, you've got to do the kitchens, you've got to do the bathrooms, you've got to do the washer and dryer in the unit, you've got to do all that stuff. So the units on a per-unit basis become spendy. So our design intent is to be careful, to balance quality with efficiency, a welcoming place for, you know, visitors that are using West 77th Street, smaller units that would be complemented by, you know, really great common area spaces, and ultimately just bringing more affordability to people with new product. Like I said over a year ago, that this product is happening a lot in other cities and in Minneapolis. It's been done in a few spots, and it just, I think I said this probably during Guitar Center, I said, why not do this in Edina? Why not do this in suburbs? And maybe we'll find a reason, as we go through this whole process, why it doesn't happen. But if we could make it happen, I think it would be really, really great to broaden the product availability to the public and, you know, develop, redevelop a, you know, a site that I think is ready to be redeveloped, and with a tired old building, that's, so anyway, we're excited, and I think Pete and I are a good team, and so I want to bring Pete on to do his introduction to the project.
Thanks, Tom, and good evening, everyone. So I'll, I'd like to go through the drawings that you see, some of Mick's comments, and essentially kind of how we got to the point that we are today, so you get a little background of what our thoughts were, and maybe some, I think Tom's pointed out, some of the challenges on the site. Starting out from this was the idea of creating these smaller units, create more of a natural affordability, as Tom was referring to, but also providing great amenity space so that if you do have a small unit, you actually still want to go to some of these amenity spaces. So some of the money is put out towards a roof deck on the top of the parking, which would be kind of a nice outdoor area. We've got kind of the Sky Lounge, which is up on the upper level. We've got a lot of other common spaces throughout the project, fitness areas, someplace that if somebody has a home office or is working from home, any of those things, they can get out to a space and work. So we're still in the programming stages of that, and this is still, very early, but the idea is really to kind of be well-appointed units at an affordable price with the ability to get out and socialize in the common spaces and have access to a lot of the common spaces and amenities that some of the higher rents get elsewhere around the Southdale area. So Tom did mention, I'm going to jump into the floodplain, so if we can go to the overhead camera. I'm not sure if people are aware, everything in red is in the floodplain. This point right here is the building. So one of the issues and amenities that some of the higher rents get elsewhere around the Southdale area. So Tom did mention, I'm going to jump into the flood plain, so if we can go to the overhead camera. I'm not sure if people are aware, everything in red is in the flood plain. This point right here is the building. So one of the issues that we are fighting with here is the fact that the roads are in the flood plain. So to build the building, to build everything, we really need to be two feet above that flood plain, and that, that is a recalculation of the numbers. So the Watershed Districts are recalculating the numbers based on kind of the change in water flow. So essentially, the first floor of this building will need to be roughly four to five feet above the curb. And that's going to put us at the two feet above the flood plain. So that does have some ramifications on the building. It does mean that underground parking doesn't really work. And so that was kind of one of the first places we started, is what about the parking? And we looked at this rather than the two per unit. In a microunit, you really don't have two people living in these particular units, but more as a one-per-bedroom, is that if you look at that ratio across, that's kind of where we're at, and then some visitor parking on top of that. Also kind of careful to get some loading zones in this as well. And so, is there a pointer on how I can...
Use the mouse.
Use the mouse?
Yeah.
There we go. Thank you. So, and I know when we first started the project, we looked at the guidelines, and so it talks about the street rooms, and we're trying to respect that to a large degree. So the 50-foot setback along West 77th, kind of the 65-foot height, and a lot of prominence on the corner. So we're really looking at doing something kind of special on the corner. We're kind of excited about the opportunity for the curve in West 77th, so as you're coming across the curve, you actually are going to get a really good view of where the building is. And so that front of the building is also set up with some walk-up style units, so those will have front doors, they will have some patios. You can kind of see in this area, right through this portion right there, that's going to be kind of a raised terrace, and so those will be semi-private spaces to units with all these sidewalks that are spilling out towards the front of the street, and kind of a common garden out on the corner. We are proposing sidewalks back behind the curb, so we may, we'll just have to work with city engineering as far as how far on behind that curb and how far that boulevard space is. So we're completely on board with that, completely on board with providing, you know, really good sidewalk connections, bike connections as well. There's some bike amenities in the, inside the parking facility. We see that parking for bikes as well. We've also set up a loading zone so people can back into the building. I'll go into that in a little bit. And then looking at kind of setting up the building a very active West 77th. Now, in terms of the access on West 77th, we actually have two flat levels of parking. So one of the things that was brought up in the, kind of the design review, is that it's redundant. It's actually not redundant what we're doing, because one goes to the lower level, one goes to the upper level. If we were to pitch that parking as a ramp, we would lose half a level of parking, which is a lot of stalls, and we can't really afford to lose that many stalls. And in, also in the design guidelines, it actually showed a ramp along the south side. That south side ramp, if it comes through here, eliminates about 20-plus stalls. And so we are really impacted, we felt, by the number of stalls on the site compared to the facility that's being built and the number of units. So what we tried to do is approach it from the design perspective and say, okay, if the access along West 77th is done appropriately, and we're completely on board with the idea of a wooner for whatnot. But I do want to say that what that idea is, that, that should look like a street with sidewalks on both sides. It is, I wouldn't really call it a ramp, but it does slope up, because the distance from the curb, right here, to the face of the building, that's all going to rise at about a 4% to 5% slope, because it has to to get the building above the flood plain. So this portion of the ramp is sloping up along with grade, and then as we start getting behind the building, that ramp goes to about 8%, and then once we're inside the building, which is actually the next slide right here, inside the building, it's actually sloping up even greater. So we're making up the ramp on the inside of the space and not on the outside, and we can show some more information on that as we go along. But I see that being, looking much more like a street with two sidewalks, that people can walk down the side of the street and have a little bit of that, and these sidewalks right here, which access the bikes, and can actually get to the back area of the site so it can start looking like a more pedestrian zone, because we do believe that's quite important. On the front of the building, we do have a port cochere. It's under the building right here. That port cochere actually does face the street right here, looking straight out here. Part of the reason for its location is we are also making up four to five feet of grade from this point right here. So by the time we go up and up, we also have to get back down. So we're kind of constricted by about how quickly we can get up and then get back down. So it takes a space that's really about this big in a loop to actually make that maneuver. So we can talk about, you know, is this too many parking stalls? Is this too much asphalt? Should we add more trees? Yes, and make that look good. But it really is kind of a requirement of being able to get some access from, on computer drive as well. And we do believe the two points of access are actually kind of important to access the ramp, but also the amount of cars that are coming in and out, the accessibility, and the chance that there actually might be some floodwater in some of these areas as well. Now, hopefully that's not very likely, but the loading zone, we do have the ability for trucks to come in, to back into here and back into a covered loading space. We see that as an advantage for residents, certainly as they're moving in and out, but also advantage as people are not looking at this all the time. It's kind of behind the screen. It's also where trash comes out of. One of the other big issues in these buildings these days is package delivery. Amazon drops off constantly. So the ability to get the Amazon trucks through under the port cochere, dropping in a package zone for the residents and back out is, you know, that circulation does happen. So we're trying to keep more of the visitor functions off West Computer and the residence, or Computer and the residents more off 77th. And so this end right here, the yellow area is actually common space spills out to kind of a common garden. The orange area, our walk-up style unit, so they'd have a patio, a terrace, a front door that faces the street. A second floor kind of is a mimic of the first floor, so this is the access to the second level of parking. Everyone would be on kind of a flat level and then be able to walk directly into that corridor to the elevator, wherever they're parking, and have access to the units. As we're moving up, I'm sorry, going backwards. The units do stack pretty much throughout. These range from about 350 square feet on the very small side. There's a number at 450 square feet, 500, 550 square feet. So the majority of these units are kind of in the 450 to 550 square feet, but then they, they kind of ramp up as well to 650. We have some at 900, 950, and we've got some very, quite large units on the top, more penthouse style. And still probably programming those, but they'll be, you know, 1100, 1200 square feet. So as the building goes up, it does kind of stack. This is the top level right up here. We do have a rooftop commons area that spills out to a roof deck. So we are stepping the building back in a couple locations on this building, one on the west side on the corner. We think that'll be a great visual as you're coming down West 77th and you see the rooftop deck. And the other is towards the, kind of the northeast corner. So both those portions of the building step down. And we see, and so these are just some really rough images. We're very early on in the, kind of the design phase. We've spent a lot of time on the, maybe the programming, site planning, and the massing. This is really trying to be indicative of kind of how the massing plays out, not really getting into materials yet and whatnot, but we wanted your comments based on kind of the sketch plan idea. But in this package, you can see this is the rooftop deck, this will be an amenity space, this is the drop-off in the port cochere. We have kind of a prominent piece on the corner. This will be common area, right through this area right here. It'll spill out onto this rooftop terrace. This is kind of the main view from West 77th, so we do see this corner being fairly glassy. It's probably more like a contemporary version of, of the design. We see this, this end being much classier with the rooftop deck, and then the front of the building over here, you can see the step-back of the building on the, on the northeast corner, as well as the rooftop deck over here. Front door patio is kind of spilling out to the street right along West 77th. Some of the images, these are pretty kind of common, I would say, of what we're thinking, although they're not actual design elements to date. They are kind of a direction of what we're seeing, and that is certainly in your package. So just kind of in summary, real quick, you know, we're willing to kind of keep, to take, take the input, hear what you have to say on this. We think it's a great opportunity to provide something that's not in the market now, but is being very well-received in a lot of other places. And one of the things that's also, I think, a little bit unique about this in a very positive way, is that there have been some small units done, but they haven't necessarily been combined with the level of amenities that we're looking at. So we're trying to bridge those two worlds to kind of create a, a great place to live, create homes at a fairly affordable, as close as we can get to, price. And so with that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Arthur Cresson, go ahead, Todd.
What's your mix between micro studio, one and two bedrooms, roughly?
I would say that the two bedrooms are hovering right around 10%. The micros and the studios are probably on that other 10%. So the micro unit being something between, you know, it's roughly around that 500 square foot, is probably right around the 70, 65% to 70%. And then we have, I'd say another, I'm doing the math in my head on the fly, but another 10% to 15% I would call maybe in the more traditional one-bedroom sizing, so 700 to 750 square feet. Those are in some prominent corners and locations. And then, like I said, we've got a couple maybe more penthouse-style units in a couple locations.
Thank you.
Any questions down here? Go ahead.
Just to follow up on, let's have a few questions. Wanted to follow up on something you said. I think Mick's eight comment had to do with moving the sidewalks away from the street. It sounds like that's what you're thinking also, just to confirm. Okay. Mr. Lund talked about soil issues and how the, how the changing environment could impact that, so it sounds like you've, you're on that. Some perhaps philosophical questions. It appears you're not planning to use mixed use. I'm sure you've thought about going mixed use, and you've thought about the pros and cons. Could you share a little bit of your thinking about that? I know you mentioned the Pentagon property also.
Yeah, I think, unless Tom wants to take the first crack at it. Okay. I think in a lot of these projects along corridors, it might be more kind of busier corridors, I think commercial's always one of the first things you kind of say, is this a good commercial site? And I think there is a concern in a lot of places of getting the commercial to work. I think we're always concerned about making commercial work well enough, and how do you get access in and out? How do you get trash out? How do you mix it with residents? Where do they park? And so all of those kind of go into the mix. And one of the, I think, maybe challenges on this site is that we, we know there was some desire for, I think there was some desire for some density and some height, and to mix that with the amount of parking and the microunits is that it kind of tips over a little bit if you start getting commercial users and mixing those two populations, which ends up opening up some more asphalt. And so I think we're a little bit constrained by that, and we're a little bit constrained by just the desire on this particular project, on more of the micro side, to actually put commercial in, in a way that would be successful. And there's plenty in the area, so I'm not sure that we...
Yeah, and I guess a little bit out of respect for Hillcrest and Solomon across, across the way and, and their endeavors and what they're, what they're doing with their retail. And I don't really want to get into their, their world of, and, you know, we want them to be successful too, so that's, that's my simple answer for you. I just, that's, that's what they're doing, and they're doing it well. And what you said about how complicated it is is very true, you know, when you, when we start mixing it. So we stayed away from it, so.
Will there be some kind of pedestrian access? I mean, the one, excuse me, I've, I've got something in my throat that's making me, you know, a little dry, but how will pedestrians get from your property? Because the advantage I see for mixed use in your property is that there's some, it's almost like an amenity for the people that live there. And so it's, your answer makes complete sense, but I'm wondering, will people be able to walk, and how comfortable will that walk be to get to wherever the amenities are?
And so I think one of the newer parts of what's happening in the market and why some of these projects work is because of that access to amenities that you're talking about and the commercial retail. So we did very purposefully kind of locate the building kind of on the main intersection, which also provides a direct access in the quickest and shortest route possible to some of the commercial zones. So we're getting it, we're trying to get it close. And so putting the elevators in that location, getting some common space that has a direct access that leads to kind of all those pedestrian ways, I think, was our, our way of trying to handle that.
Okay. Yeah, I'm going to segue to my next question with a comment, I mean, and I'll have more comments later, but I just want to stick to questions mostly is, is it would be, I mean, generally, I'll give my comments later, but generally, this is a nice property, and it just would be kind of a sad thing if it's going to be, if it would turn out to be one of those things where if people wanted to go to the Solomon property, they'd go down, get in their car, and drive a block. So hopefully, we could avoid that. My next question is, have you looked at the traffic? We get, as you know, and I'm sure you see this in Edina and many other cities, we always get comments from people about traffic. Now, this property is not near any current residential, so there may be less, but still, it seems, it seems to me, I'm not an expert, but it seems like there might be more room for traffic here, or less, less of a traffic problem than there could be in other locations. Have you looked at what the traffic is like here?
Observation, observationally, yes. And one of the advantages here, and so traffic is really weird. And so not being a traffic engineer, but having read a lot of traffic studies and seeing kind of how that, that works. Because of the timing of how lights come in and how people come in and off the freeway, that actually greatly affects the perception of traffic. So if cars are coming every, you know, five seconds, and you can't pull out, and there's five seconds and five seconds, and it takes you, you know, 10 minutes to pull out, there's terrible traffic. Same number of cars that pass, and then there's a gap, doesn't feel like any traffic at all. So we believe that kind of in the spacing of this, that one, that's going to be true kind of on West 77th. The computer is pretty quiet, so I don't foresee a traffic issue here, and the residential traffic numbers don't really trigger quite as much because you don't tend to have the peaks that you would say on a commercial project. So I don't foresee it, but...
Related, and I have a couple more questions after this, though. We, we believe, you, you read our comprehensive plan, we believe, and I'm sure many people do, we believe the future is going to be fewer single-passenger vehicles, more multimodal mass transit, shared rides. And obviously, you can't make the Metropolitan Transit Company do anything, but what can, what thoughts have you given with this property to work well or support mass transit or other kinds of non-automotive, non-automotive transit?
I don't have a great answer, but I, I'm a big biker. So anything, any buildings that we really work in, I really kind of focus on, on the ability to have bikes, and actually, I think I own eight of them now. So it, it's interesting, because the people in that, in that world, there's commuter bikes, and there's, you know, the road bikes, and there's all this. So part of it is, and I think multimodal is exactly that, is, is finding the right, the right strategy for a variety of different users. That's just one. Another one is certainly kind of Met Transit, and that's a whole kind of regional system that the best thing I think we can do is get people close to the bus stop, if and when and where they are, and provide some transit information. Obviously, the app-based ride share is very, very much happening right now. Really kind of the driving part of the idea behind the port cochere is that a lot of people are coming in and out, and they're using the app-based services. And so to make that as easy as possible, now that doesn't necessarily reduce congestion, but it is what's happening out there. So, and then the last one, pedestrians, just make sure we're trying to be really well-connected to whatever network is out there. So...
The other thing I wanted to add, and I think I probably said this during Guitar Center, was that, that, you know, trying to ratchet things down, and things are going to change, and we're going to have driverless cars, and people are using more Uber and stuff, and it's just a, it's just a real balance at this point, because if you don't have the parking, people can't, can't be there, or can't rent, which would be bad, but we know it's all going to change in the future. So we're just kind of in a weird, a weird spot.
And actually, I'll add one other thing, and this actually was pretty thoughtful on the ramp side as well. So a ramp that has, is pitched, can only be used for one thing, and that's cars. A ramp that's actually two-flat structures has a life beyond the car, because it's just space. And so the ability to convert that if and when cars go away is actually kind of baked into what's here now, so.
Yeah, thank you. I like your very scientific word, we're in a weird spot right now. It's true. I mean, like, I'm aware of a, of a big proposal in Pearl District in Portland right now, where they're, they're really driving down the number of parking much more significantly than you'd like to do on your current projects. And one of the complaints they're getting is, oh, okay, so you're going to be based on ride share, right? Where's all those ride shares going to be dropped? Because they didn't, they're like, on the street, right in front of the building? I like that you've thought about it. Hey, let's have a way that we can make a very efficient ride share. Keep thinking about that, maybe, maybe you look at that, because that is, if that is a future or the future, you know, and we get rid of parking, we'll need a robust area for ride share access. My final two questions I'll ask together, and... My final two questions I'll ask together, and you're at seventy-five units per acre, you're at six stories. Did you give more thought to more density, more height? How did you land where you landed?
Yes, I did. I was told we can't. The comp, well, I'm not going to go into that. It's just, it is what it is, so we're staying within the boundaries that are there right now. So it was, that's, we were just respecting that. Because I did talk to Kerry about that. I was like, seventy-five units per acre here? And like, really? That's all? And he's like, yeah, but you can go to twelve stories. I mean, it doesn't really, doesn't really make sense. But maybe there's a better way of saying that.
And I think, given the seventy-five, backing into the seventy-five and trying to be at an affordable level, drives us down from a twelve-story building because of construction type. So it keeps us in wood frame construction, which allows us to hit some price points on that that are going to be much more affordable than going twelve. Twelve could be doable, but then you need more density to make up for that.
You could go higher with IBC with the new code, right?
Yes.
Now, you could go another story, right? Or maybe two?
Yes.
Right?
Maybe two.
Or maybe two. But that, then that goes beyond the seventy-five per acre, you know? So that's, that becomes challenging.
You'd probably hit a parking constraint if you had to...
Well, you could add another level to the deck, I suppose, but, you know, again, there's a balance here in cost. Trying to keep the price of the units down, that's my goal anyway. At least, that's my thesis here, is to just keep them down. And so now we add another level to the, I don't know, I guess we could play with that, but it's, it's, again, we're just trying to stay within the boundaries of the twenty-forty plan and the zoning and all.
It gets back to the weird spot definition, too. I'll talk about this a little bit more later, I'm going to add my questions, but there's a lot of people that just, there's a lot of citizen feedback against taller buildings. I believe weird spot, that in not that many years, we're going to wish the buildings that we held low were taller. We're going to regret the ones in certain areas that we've kept shorter, we're going to regret that we did that. But that's the end of my questions. I like to give some comments later. Thank you for your discussion.
Thanks. Do you have any questions, Sue?
I was interested in your response on the sustainable design criteria, and I noticed that we did not even include in our questionnaire Minnesota Green Communities. So what of their eight categories, are there any that you are kind of using as sort of your inspiration or any particular areas that you really feel this project lends itself to in particular?
Yeah, we, I do actually a lot of work with green communities. We're working on a certification for a green communities project right now. And so the green community is just as a particular format. A lot of that is based on location. And so there's a big chunk of it about being close to transit, being on an existing site. And so I think it meets all of those very well, in a place that's supportive of density and goods and services nearby. So I think the basic location of that, absolutely. I think your question might be related more to what are we doing inside the building and the construction of it. So nowadays, we are getting, I mean, the codes have gotten considerably better than they were, so even within green communities and the ability to do better energy performance, we're getting pretty close to that, just in our kind of standard construction. But all of our projects exceed code, which is basically do a really well insulated building to save money. We also kind of look at long-term costs for residents as well to try to keep those numbers down. Because if they're paying more in energy bills, they have less money to pay in rent. And so the ability to try to capture that and do kind of a good building is where, so we focus on insulation and then all LED lighting. So we do kind of low-energy lighting where we can. We try to be smart about where the lighting is in terms of trying to keep some of those numbers down. There's always a balance between that and safety. So some of these are on motion detectors, some of them are not. Waste, you know, there's some waste management, trying to reduce waste and divert from landfill. So we work pretty hard on that and that would be kind of built into the construction contract as well. I know I'm missing a bunch of others, but if there's any more specific questions?
Just, actually, I was thinking more about the external approach to this project as it goes on their construction. So any, were there any parts of sort of the site design that you felt were kind of driven by maybe the site improvement aspect of the green communities?
I think one of the, I mean, what drove the site was probably the soils, which isn't necessarily the green community side of it. I think trying to work with really bad soil and in the floodplain piece, which actually they probably lose some points on green communities on, about the floodplain, but that did drive a lot of our thinking. And I will say, which we actually forgot to mention, we are looking at the, because we are in a sensitive zone for some of the flooding, we are looking on the backside, the south side, to be able to kind of do some best management along that edge. So we can do some water filtration, have a little bit of capacity along that backside as well. And so we are looking at those strategies, which I wouldn't necessarily green communities, but they might be more watershed-based strategies about controlling, controlling storm water.
One of the things I was talking to Terry Monarch about today at Confluence was, and this is a, it's kind of a push and pull here. If you look at the south side of the building, we're at twenty-two feet or something like that from the parking, from the property line. If we had more room back there, there are, oh, gosh, what do they call them? They're catch basins, but they're, they're nice catch basins to hold water. And I know that that's happening on the promenade along Guitar Center, and that's planned there. And I know he's working very extensively, has presented plans within Fred Richards Golf Course for these very nice holding areas for water when we have too much water. So if the, if the building, I mean, this is a trade-off. If the building was farther forward, let's say it was thirty feet, we'd pick up twenty feet, we'd have forty feet and on the back. And we'd have more of an opportunity there to do this. We could still do it, we just don't have a lot of space, we only have twenty-two feet. But the trade-off, though, is now we're pushing the building, you know, outside the boundaries of Mick's recommendation and closer to the street where there's, you know, we're going to have people living and there's noise and all that. So again, it's kind of a trade-off. I could see actually going either way, but again, we're trying to honor what Mick has, you know, you know, the vision there and, and so. But I think, you know, Terry was saying today, you know, we could certainly look at some, you know, if we had more space in the back, we could do even a better job holding water. And so. The other, the other thing I just wanted, Commissioner Lee, was, I don't know if anybody read the last part of my narrative, which was, had to do with geothermal and solar. And I'm just putting that out there because I know how important affordable housing is. I say affordable housing as in Susan's affordable housing, but, and affordable housing in other levels. But just as things are changing so dramatically and rapidly in our climate, and it just seems like we could maybe look at some other things. We've got a big deck here that we're not going to be using, we've got a big rooftop we're not going to be using, and if there was way to incorporate some solar and, or maybe geothermal, some things like that, that we ought to be doing, I mean, down the road here. I mean, maybe not in my lifetime, but it would be great if we kind of had a project that was a, you know, a great example for other people, other projects. And I kind of feel like it's got to start somewhere. And so I'm just throwing, I just threw that out there because I believe in it, but getting it paid for is, is really hard still, so, anyway.
I think that's very important as well. I guess I, the reason I'm focusing on this, because this is about sustainability, and I was aware of recently a building that was done entirely by the, I should say, internal tenant project that was done according to the Living Building Challenge. And in that case, they take every last bit and divert it from landfill. When we're short on places to put our trash and we are running out of good, sustainable energy sources, I think you're absolutely right, Tom, that at some point, when you have an opportunity to do project, you know, that might be something that's going to need you to drive a little bit on that. And I agree, I think that the city probably needs to partner on that, but it may not actually be led by the city. It might, some of our best innovation comes from the developers, so, thank you.
Any other, Kamalud, do you have some questions?
It seems like when you're building in a more urban area like Minneapolis, one of the things that allows affordability to work a little bit better, and especially like in a small unit building, is the need for less parking. So I assume you guys have kind of minimized the amount of parking you think you absolutely need to do this project?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
But that's, that's absolutely right on, because there was a project that just opened behind, it's about Ninth, Ninth and, it's coming out of Tenth, I guess, that's Tenth and Marquette. It's all micro units, no parking. And that's a tremendous savings. So, yeah, that would be great.
So in terms of, as far as I know, there's not much transit there. I think there's just, there's just rush hour buses that go through there. Was that a concern at all when you were designing this or selling this or anything? People buy small units with cars or rent?
Yeah. They do, they do. And I just, there's a, there seems to be a movement to, towards these smaller units, and they've gotten to be so sophisticated and so, they're just, you hardly feel like you're living in a small unit, they're just so well-done, that, and then the common areas themselves are really well-done, so people can leave their small units and go to common areas and so. They're, do you have anything, anything else?
Excuse me, I flew. I'm also a little surprised about the keeping to the seventy-five units per acre requirement. You know, again, if there's any place that, you know, we see so many battles in the city in terms of, you know, not having dense housing near single-family homes, and this seems like miles away from anything. And it would seem that if any place, this is a good place to, to have taller buildings and higher density. I mean, I appreciate the fact that you're trying to work with the city on that, but I think if, I don't know, if I have a message for the city council, it's, I think we should reconsider the seventy-five units. And, or maybe even, you know, consider some of the amenity spaces as being part of the space or something, or making up for that. Let's see. So, so I'm not a construction expert, but my understanding is that, because there was some talk about also cost, that, you know, six stories is easily doable and has been for a long time with wood. Now it's seven, potentially eight stories, and there's talk of other places in the country where they're building these skyscrapers in wood and everything. So wood's cheaper than, than concrete. So, but I assume the parking decks are all concrete for the cars, right? Okay. So, so it seems like we're having micro units made with wood. I mean, I just find this funny, we're having micro units made with wood to save on cost and the parking is concrete. And I mean, I mean, what's the, I mean, I guess you're not going to answer this, but I mean, what's the cost for the parking versus the cost for the housing, you know?
Way less.
Yeah, way less. I think that's really interesting that you're pointing out the fact that the concrete's for the cars and the wood are for the people. I think a lot of it also has to do with the span, so cars weigh a lot. And so, so you don't have too many columns and you have enough span, it kind of needs to be done out of concrete, also durable enough that it can take some water and all the other, it being banged around a little bit. So obviously, that's why, I would say in this building, the first, the entire first two floors are concrete and then it's wood on top of that. So it's built more as a layer cake than just by type.
Okay.
And I would also say, just, just, those wood skyscrapers, which are really, really cool, are more expensive than concrete.
Oh, really?
Or they're close. But, yeah. Yeah, so to get the wood engineered to that level. But those prices are coming down, it's kind of a new technology here.
Okay. Then in terms of mixed comments, you said that the, you weren't thinking so much of the woo-nurf because you need a ramp to the second floor, right? Because there, because there's no ramp inside?
Yeah, I think, I think we're kind of in line with the idea of the woo-nurf in that it needs to be a nice space. So I thought, my thinking, when we were looking at the design guidelines, is that Mick had set up this idea that there should be kind of a break every two-hundred-and-fifty feet. And so oddly enough, that's about five-hundred feet. So I said, you know, as, if you look at the way the street is broken up, this should look like a road that's going through. So it was designed as a street and the idea is there are sidewalks on both sides and we could do some street planning. So as you're driving by this, this actually looks like a road. And so the part that I don't, that isn't really a ramp is because it's kind of going up with grade as it's going back towards the building. Once it gets behind the edge of the building is really, you know, the front edge, which is going to be almost seventy-five, eighty, eighty-some feet away, that's when it's going to start going from maybe more five to eight to twelve percent. So you're really not going to see that ramp. So that front portion where people are walking by, we can certainly introduce, you know, maybe some concrete in there or some other amenities that make it look more like what a woo-nurf would be. I don't know that I see kids playing out in there like a, what a true woo-nurf might, might do as more of a transition space.
Yeah, what about in terms of, I mean, because I think what he's talking about more is in terms of connecting this property to the property behind it and connecting that to Seventy-seventh Street through, you know, slow car space or non-car space. So, I mean, it would need, I mean, so the ramp, I mean, you could have something that goes up with a, with a grade, but it would have to, I mean, I don't know how it goes to the grade. Yeah, what happens on the other side, right?
Right, yeah.
Let's see. And then I have the same thoughts about the commercial, retail, restaurant, something on the, something on the corner, maybe, if you've thought about something like that, just to make it, you know, a more interesting place. And then in terms of, you know, with Fred Richards Park and Nine Mile Creek Trail across the street, and you said you're a cyclist and, and there seems to be a lot of bike amenities in here, rather than just like a sidewalk, has there any been, any thought been to be making something that's wider than a sidewalk that would be in the front on Seventy-seventh and/or Computer Drive that would allow cyclists to bike there rather than run over pedestrians on their way there?
I think that is probably something we should look at, so I think that's a great idea. There's always a kind of an odd thing of if the bike isn't connected by another trail to something else, it doesn't really do that much good. So I think it's, at that point, you do get out to the street. But I think we should look at, harder at where those connections are and try to provide for that.
Okay.
I also want to add that getting some connection somewhere between here and the ramp at High One Hundred to the bike trail would be great. I know you can get in there, but it's not exactly clear as to how you kind of get back there, so it'd be nice to be able to look at that as well. I think traffic is a concern because people are kind of whipping around those corners and driving too fast sometimes and, so, you know, how do you get people across safely? That's, but it would sure be nice, you know, people can get across safely.
Okay, thank you.
Well, one of the questions I had was the access point from Computer Avenue, is that kind of lining up with the Pentagon Village? Is there an access coming out to, Chris, anyone remember? Was there any access, like?
I believe there's an access point right about there, coming through.
Okay. Well, like, next time you come back, you know, let's just, you know, kind of look at this in context with what's being, you know... at this in context with what's being, you know, proposed to the north and to the west and, you know, try to have those access points aligned. And apologize, Chris, I should have asked you when you're up, or, but West 77th Street, I know I always ask this, but are there, is the city planning for improvements for, like, bike lanes and, because we're just getting more and more development along that street, and it's like, it's like a mini-highway.
I'll have to check into that.
Yeah, let's check into that, too, and just see, because, you know, there's more development happening there. Can we bring the, get it off me and show the picture again? Thanks. So one other thing, I was going to ask about the water table, too, or just, you know, your catch basins, and I know one of the things we've been trying to do along the development to the north and then all along that whole Pentagon area is to kind of daylight the water, and I think that's what you were talking about. So I know you're saying if we push the building up closer to 77th, you'd have more opportunity to maybe do something like that in the back, but is there an opportunity to take advantage of that on the north side?
On the front, yeah.
Yeah?
I imagine so. I mean, I'll run it by Terry, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, we can, we can play with that.
Yeah.
Again, that's where it would be good next time this comes, so we could see, because I, again, I can't remember what the setback was for Pentagon Village, was that at the 50 feet, too? Anyway, you know, whatever that setback is, we should kind of try to match that, so. Let's see, what else did I have? I know you're, we're saying that you're going to be meeting the requirement for affordable units, but do you have a feel? I know you keep mentioning that all these are affordable, but are they, how many are going to be affordable?
Well, it's 10 or 20 percent.
10 or 20 percent.
That's whatever. We just have, we have to figure that out.
Sure.
Yeah. We just haven't got, now that we've gotten here, and now we can do some pricing with contractor and start to figure, figure that out, but, and then working with staff on that as well, so.
Okay.
This is kind of the beginning of that.
Great. And I think the last question I had, and maybe this is Lou or somebody, you're a biker, too, but like electric bikes, those are becoming more and more popular, can those just be plugged in anywhere? Can, like EV sta, I know you're doing EV stations for cars, but are they different? Or can we add, is that something we need to start looking at, too?
Actually, I think that's a great idea. As far as I know, there's standard power, where EV cars actually have a different kind of power.
So you're just going to plug them in, okay.
Because we'll be EV-ready, and so we'll put in, well, I'm pretty sure, we'll be putting in that component, and then that can be expanded.
Okay.
Because that is gonna, that's going to be a huge market. And so the bikes also, I think, the bike room would be capable of doing that, but I think you're right, and I think that's something we should probably look at, the ability to expand.
Right, okay, cool. Cool. I know you wanted to add some comments, but I just add mine. I agree that 75 units per acre, I think this is a great area if we could look at, you know, intensifying it. And I know that the, the water level makes that difficult, because I know we asked the same thing for the development north, and it was just, it was tough to do that with the parking, so.
We just stayed away from it because Kerry said stay away from it, and so, but we would definitely explore it if there was any sort of a.
We just like to make his life difficult.
I'm not about doing that.
Yeah. So did you have some more?
Yeah, I mean, the same thing. I'd like to see us push in this location, I'd just see us push on the density and the height. I think it's a good location, the, the project across on the north side of the street by Fred Richards received Nate, Nate resident feedback about the height, they didn't want to look across and see it, but this is farther away and times are changing, and again, I think in the future, we're going to really regret the, you know, not building taller, more dense houses. It's going to, you only need a couple of pandemics or electrical or, or, not electrical, but, you know, what our cars run on, you know? Crises or climate issues, we're going to wish we had a lot more density available to be living and be able to rely on mass transit. This is, this is one of the best locations in the city of Edina to do that. I think, by the way, that what you're presenting here is a nice improvement we have here, I think it's a nice job, and we look forward to you doing it, but I'd like to see you push it a little bit more. I think that, I think the, we're going to go through a thing where people are going to think going high in contemplation of future climate change is like a gift we're, the planning commission is giving to developers, so developers can get rich. I think we're going to get, have to get through that and just realize that it's future planning based on our perception of what the world is going to require and what residents are going to require. If the high school students who come to these meetings, they only come for an hour because they have classes, I think if we had a public meeting where high school students could stick around for the longer meetings, we had the height issues come up, they would be all 90, 90-some percent in favor of higher buildings and more density. So I think we need to take that into contemplation. We can't, we can't always be planning our next building based on the last problem, the last problem that we have with a project, or based on the engineering things or social things we were trying to accomplish 20 years ago when we went to college. We have to be thinking about what people that are going to college today are going to be wanting, because that's where, that's where the value's going to be. Also, by the way, for people my age, I think people my age are going to want more density and more height, because they're going to want to sell their place, they're going to want to winter in the south, and they're going to want to live in Edina, and without having to worry about shoveling and, you know, and we're just, we're going to need places for me to live when I'm 20 years older than I am today. So, but thank you. I think it's a nice project, and I'm really glad to see the two of you and your companies with us tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks. Are there other, go ahead, Tom.
Very interesting project. I'm curious to see how the micro-units work out. Clearly, that's something we've done a lot in Edina, it's kind of a, I've seen, we've done some, involved in some of these in Portland, probably not that high of a mix with a, with a micro, but it's a fascinating niche, and I think we, in Edina, kind of confuse, there's two affordables, there's the big affordable, the capital A, where we all get the quotas and the numbers, and then there's the little affordable, the lowercase affordable, which is, we really need to build out our housing stock and our multifamily stock, because we're kind of very bifurcated. We're hitting the number to get to the big, the capital A, and then we're hitting luxury or market rate, but we're really not tapping into some of those, what's in between. I think that, this property and this project kind of addresses some of that. So I think it's, it's very interesting. I'll be curious to see how it, how it goes and how it finances. Curious to see how it finances. I still do have concerns about the industrial area and what regulations that will pass on to, not just related to your project, but in any project in the area of what that means could portend for, for some, it's a state, it's a state regulation, as I recall, and there's no way around it. It's not a grandfathered, as I recall, I think we had a pretty, a longer discussion about this a couple of years ago, that when that residential goes in, they can't waive it, they can't waive the right, is the, it's not grandfathered in, it's just because that industrial facility's been there, once there's residential within 500 feet or whatever, I forget it is, they're subject to the different noise regulations, and I'm sure you've looked at this probably more than I have, but that's just a concern, right? And I, you know, I do have concerns about encroaching more and more into the industrial areas of Edina, that we do need to maintain a, a balance of our tax base and a balance in our development. But, but overall, I think it's a really fascinating project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There. Go ahead, Lou.
Yeah, yeah, because I should have explained, this is because we didn't have the public hearing, you can, we can blend it. It's one of the public hearings.
So, yeah, I just wanted to agree, I think this is a great project, and as Commissioner Nemirov said, I think we should definitely, and Chair said, we should definitely push for the city for more density in this area, I think it really works. To the Chair's question about the bike facilities, I'm looking at the bike plan that was approved by the city, and it shows a conventional bike lane on 77th Street, which is, sounds pretty horrible to me. It should be a protected bike lane or something. So, and I think, and I've mentioned this before, I think one of the downfalls to the, to Grandview District planning is that there's no comprehensive bicycle plan in there that's different from the bike plan, which I think doesn't, doesn't appreciate the density that's there, that we kind of need a different bike plan for that area, so. But no, I think it's a, I think it's a great project.
Yeah, just quickly, I just remember how impressed I was with the Lundville Estate team for the Guitar Center site, and, you know, it's similar, so I couldn't be more pleased with, with your going forward on this. And it's as simple as looking at the existing building on the site with what's being proposed without realizing how much more could happen there. And just the one theme of this connectiveness to the property to the west, the park to the north, all, I think that's, and I know we talked a lot about interior movement for bicycles and pedestrians in the Pentagon site, and that would be important to me. The sidewalk, all those movements across the street to the park, property to the west, I think all of that is going to be part of a larger view. And I, particularly, I liked that northwest corner, that face as it works, you know, to your property, the property to the west. And I'd like to see, you know, that similar kind of look for the northeast corner. And that woo-nurf, I think, works, that idea of creating like a street, and it doesn't just look like it's, the block ends and, and it creates, maybe doesn't go through, but I think that's a, another wonderful design, so, but I'm, I don't want to keep beating others, but thank you. Oh, and as far as traffic, trying to get a handle on traffic, I don't know how you know what's typical from this last year, because I'm on that street all the time, and you never know if it, especially last summer, whether it was even going to be open, but, you know, it's been so irregular, but, you know, there's, but, and then there's that last point. For greater density, if there was probably a case to be made, I would think there, there may be some receptive listeners here. Thank you.
Great. Do you have any other questions for us, or? Okay, great. Thank you so much. Okay, so next we have correspondence and petitions. At the chair and member comments, any comments, anything happening? I sent out that plan, did everyone get that? Yeah. Do we, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, I'll go on, I'll go on, but one of the articles in that plan, it was, was some, a meeting at the Minneapolis Federal Reserve where planning directors from Bloomington, Minnetaka, and Bill Nuenendorf of Edina gave a presentation, so you might, I think it was about affordable housing, so you might be interested in reading that.
Right. I think you can sign up for that, too, if people are interested in getting those, but they usually have some good information. Nothing? Staff comments? So Jerry was updating what council did, anything else happening at council recently? That was nothing? Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
All right. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.[1769.94]